Corey and Aaron.
Good evening. I'll call the Finance Committee to order at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, December 6th. And Don, do you want to call the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen to order at 6:00 PM.
The Board of Selectmen has joined the Finance Committee at our monthly meeting. I'll start with the Finance Committee, just a couple of routine things. Steve, I do not have any public comments or inquiries. Did you get anything this week or last week?
No, I have not.
We have a couple of things on the agenda that we wanted to cover. Trying to make this work. The three topics we have on the agenda tonight really are a quick review of the actual expenses to budget year-to-date, a review of the 2025 budget planning, and that's really taking a look at the communication that will go out to the residents of the town. And then finally, the Board of Selectmen joined us to go through the articles for the special town meeting, so we appreciate that. I would ask, since we're both here and we're both in session, that everyone just treat it as an open meeting, and if you have comments or something to say, as far as I'm concerned, we're all in an official meeting, we can say and speak up as we seem appropriate, instead of constantly trying to decide who's doing what. Okay, let me start with the year-to-date expenses. Don, can I ask, are you holding a meeting other than this, or is this your participation in this, it for this?
We're here for you.
Okay, I didn't know if you had other stuff planned also. So the first thing I wanted to do was, Steve, did you get the latest from Lori on the expenses? Okay, I went through it. I don't know if you had time. I know it's only been a few days since it came out. I have a few questions, and is there a way to zoom this? There probably is, huh?
Yep, Aaron, lower right-hand corner.
Perfect.
So these are the items that caught my attention. I really think a couple of them maybe need to be followed up on with somebody. Some of them may just be what I'm calling seasonality. Things like the accountant, the software expenses, computer licenses. They've spent, as you can see, in those two areas, year-to-date remaining all but nineteen percent of their budget. And they should be at around fifty-eight percent remaining with five months gone with this report. So they're spending way ahead, but you, again, Board of Selectmen guys, Lucy, any of you know that maybe that there is license fees paid once a year, twice a year, things like that. I don't, so I'm just saying, that's why I call it seasonality.
That's what it is.
Is it? Okay.
Yep, it's a one-time, excuse me, one-time fee per year.
So those first three to me were probably just, they caught my eye, and so I listed them out. The municipal building is showing it's only got thirty-five percent of its diesel budget left. Going into the winter, that seems like a concern to me. Ask you guys what you think.
There's additional funds in the snow and ice for diesel.
For like the plows?
For the plows. So you think that's going to cover it?
Well, that's, that's not the heating oil.
Okay. I just was concerned when I started, because I said, okay, we're going into winter, and Kevin's going to be plowing, so that's right. I thought it was all in the.
Yeah, there's a separate line item there. Nine grand or something in there.
Good, I mean, again, it just caught my eye. Really what I did is I just sorted them and looked at what is really running behind, or ahead, I should say. And everything that was behind, I ignored. I think the police part-time salaries and wages, we discussed, and a couple of the Board of Selectmen meetings now, but it's, I want to point out, it is down to ten percent through November thirtieth, thirty-first, so he's going to run out in December if there is an additional funding in there.
Right, the special town meeting, right?
But that's in January.
Yeah.
As you moved it.
Yeah, that's in January, but he also has on the revenue thing, he's got nine thousand dollars credited. Doesn't show on this form.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Again, that's why I wanted to bring it tonight, because you guys will be here.
Yes.
The grant.
Ranges.
Yeah.
Yeah. The training, I think.
Yep.
Again, the other few just caught my eye, new equipment and telephone probably are seasonal also. The, I talked to Tim about the training wages and the ambulance part-time salaries where there's no budget. And he said he spoke with the Board of Selectmen about charging some salary to that so we can break different things out. So I'm assuming that's correct. I just didn't know about it until he and I spoke the other day.
His software breaks it out differently than this.
Okay, that's, this is how it's showing up in the budget, though.
Right, right. His software shows something different.
Okay.
If you take them together and add them up, they balance.
Okay.
But separately, you'd look at this one and say, holy God, this is really down, but his is right there.
Okay. When I looked at it, the thing I saw, Don, was that his overall budget, he's like a fifty-six something versus fifty-eight for salary. So he's, he's, he's in a good place overall. But these two items caught my eye, and I just called him up and we talked on the phone. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware of it.
Yeah.
The highway superintendent salary, just had a question there. It appears, I heard that you had given Kevin and Harper up for the year or increase. Is that showing up in the actual salary area?
I'm sure up on that.
So he's running at, his budget is seventy-six thousand. And the salary is currently running at a rate to pay him eighty-three thousand. So I was trying to figure that out.
I don't know what that's showing on that.
I don't either. I should say it comes, it's something that probably someone should look at.
Because the accountant specifically said that had to be separate.
Is that including benefits?
No, no, this is, if you look at.
It's just his bi-weekly pay.
The way to look at this here, and if you took the seventy-six thousand, five seventy-five that's budgeted.
Yep.
And spread it over twelve months, it would come up to seventy-six.
Right.
What I did is take the forty-one thousand.
That's been spent so far.
I'm sorry, the year-to-date, the thirty-four thousand divided by the five months multiplied times twelve, and it comes up to eighty-three. So it looks, unless I did the math wrong, it's just something that someone should take a look at, I thought. Again, I wasn't expecting you guys to be here to address this tonight when I put this together. This was more for the, for Corey and Steve and myself to look at and see if we thought it was anything that should bring to your attention, since you're here and you're getting the full.
No, and I, I think a lot of this will be, you know, once we can do SharePoint, right, Aaron?
Yeah.
I mean, like the exports, right, where it's like live data. Thoughts?
Yep, that'll, yeah, that'll be good.
I was going to ask, how is that ten thousand that are going to Kevin, how is that going to be allocated, split up to each of the different?
Have a.
For his salaries, because it has to show up on his salary, doesn't it, for him to use it?
It does.
Yeah.
It's on, you know, like the other boards and commissions that separate paper. It shows up on that.
Okay.
She takes the taxes.
Okay, so long as I know that she knows that.
Oh, yeah.
She has to do it that way, otherwise you can't use it towards retirement.
The three of them got together, Lori, Maribel, Wendy, figuring out how to track that.
Okay, that was my main question when I was tracking it.
Question when we would, when we were going through all of this, how, excuse me, how we're going to track it. I've been talking all day, I lost my voice.
Hope you sold some houses.
The, the other question I had on this same topic is, is the intent to make that a permanent part of his salary going forward after this year, or is it a one-time?
He's, it's on July third.
Third. That's official?
We need to start advertising now.
Okay, yes, we do, yeah.
I was just going to say, I thought of that today. I said, if we don't start advertising now to train somebody in whatever, we're going to be in a tight spot again.
Paul, when you and I were talking, if you don't mind me asking you a question, you gave me the name of somebody in one of the Brookfields that you thought was going to be looking for a position. Is that?
I'll tell you, the person that I would recommend, I don't know if he's willing to switch, would be the Highway Superintendent of Grandtree.
Grandtree, not Brookfield, okay. I remember when Kevin was going to retire, like a few, number of months ago, you'd said this guy was, would be a good person.
He wasn't the one that got into an accident, was he?
No.
Okay.
What's his name, Richard Air, I think?
Oh.
I, I don't know the name, so you told me before, Paul, it just popped into my head that you had mentioned a possible, that we should think about, so.
I mean, he might be willing to change because he doesn't have two-thirds of the budget that this town has, and he's got twice as much roadway he's got to take care of. And I think he's only got one full-time employee.
I think so.
The guy, guy works his tail off, okay?
Don, you know it?
Yeah.
I mean, again, I'm just, just trying to help, I mean, maybe someone should reach out to him and say, hey, by the way, we're going to be looking for someone next summer to start.
Don't they pay him hourly? Don't they pay him hourly?
I, I don't know what his, his salary is. I know their budget is, is nothing like this town's budget.
No.
Probably why our roads are so much better. You know, I hear this from a lot of people. Kevin's only got about thirty-five miles of roads to take care of. That's all he's got to take care of, okay? He's basically got two trucks for every person that works in the highway department. He's got more equipment than you can shake a stick at, okay, so for two and a half months out of the year, the roads are beautiful. And I don't even want to go any further with this discussion, because I don't have much use for the gentleman.
Let's get back to the budget review here quickly. I know we got other stuff to get to. Other items that caught my eye, again, that one caught my eye, I just wondered how it was being addressed, because no one had said anything to the Finance Committee directly. And I just heard different snippets of information coming back from different people, and was curious what, what the plan was for the superintendent salary, so that's good to know. We'll, we'll know where it's going then.
Yeah.
And he's done July third, basically, July. Okay. Couple of the things came up, two of them were highway building maintenance and signs, and again, they may be seasonality, but you know, you're down into the thirty-six and forty percent of the budget remaining. And I'm not sure if that's a concern to anyone or not. I, I, again, we didn't know, you know, I sent it to Steve and Corey, and none of us really, these, these are things we would have sent you an email. Here's what caught our eye.
Yeah.
And Steve may have something to add, I don't know, Steve?
No, I mean, I can see that the, the department is doing things on the road, right, like even on, you know, Robinson Road, just putting outways for water and putting rocks down, right, like half-inch gravel. You know, he's doing, they've been doing a lot of that for the waterways, but I have no question about it, I just, it seems quite close to the amount of money budgeted, right, so we just got to be careful of that.
I kind of looked at anything I thought that was a forty percent or below could be something we should look at.
So like signs and street lines. If we pave a road like Hunt Road, Chapter Ninety can't cover the actual street line, it's a separate item.
So there's a budget for it, yeah.
So, I mean, we don't have any other new roads to have to line, so I don't imagine, you know, it sounds like.
But he does spend the budget pretty much, that, that gets spent every year.
Add more lines.
Yeah, I mean, it's maybe updating parking lot, town hall, I'm sure there's a lot of things that fall into it.
That's once a year.
That's once a year, okay.
Yeah, he does the parking areas, yeah.
Yeah, so I know from another town that the cost of the materials has gone up this year.
Okay, again, just, just, we're really pointing these things out, that, that, these are things that may or may not be an issue, so you guys should take, I mean, I'll email this to you so you have it.
No, that's right.
Council on Aging caught my eye. Their budget for the nutrition program is twenty-four hundred, and they've spent all but fourteen percent of it. The three-year average for that program is only seven hundred and eighteen dollars, so it's spending at a lot, much faster rate than it ever has before. I don't know.
They have a one-time major expense. They have a one-time major expense when they get their assessment from all the services.
When the bill comes, they tell us how many meals were served, how many meals on wheels were served, et cetera. They send us the bill. It used to be, the reason it's, I used to ask for that much money is because the bill kept, you know, inching up as we had so many more people coming to the meal site. Since COVID, we don't. So the price is coming down, so we only spent two thousand something out of it this year.
So that's a seasonal, that's a one-time hit.
Well, I don't, I don't think, the budget was twenty-four hundred. You spent two thousand and seventy-two already. You only have three hundred and twenty-seven left for the next.
Right, because I got the bill in July that said it was two thousand, whatever, two thousand.
Seventy-two, seventy-two, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're saying, so that covers us until next year?
And we're done until next July, when they send the next bill.
They do have one charge that they're putting against that, the phone line for the fax machine, which is only used for the nutrition people. Okay, it's coming out of that line item.
Okay.
The fax machine can be used for everybody. It does not have to be just for the nutrition.
I was just concerned you were going to run out of money in the program in another month.
No, we will not.
Okay.
Or you should not. They should not, whichever you want to put it.
Library part-time wages. They're spending at a much faster clip at forty percent, but what really caught my eye is unless I misread the data, the three-year average was in like around fifty-three thousand dollars, and it only budgeted twenty-seven thousand. Does that make sense to anybody?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the trustees worked out a employment contract with the librarian.
Okay.
Did they sign it finally? Okay.
And, which we don't have a copy of.
Okay.
What they increased her to, and the other thing we didn't do is put there two and a half percent in. It skipped. A lot of money, but so it's seventy-three, forty-two, forty-four.
Okay. Yeah, actually, I saw that, I didn't connect the two.
That's what that's about, and that maintains two people in the building, like we promised them. Four years ago.
Yeah, it took a while to get there, but that's good. The only other thing I listed was the unemployment expenses. We haven't spent anything, and I know that the Board of Selectmen are planning to use some of that in the special town meeting to cover funding of a couple of different items, so I just included that as a, to validate that there is plenty of money in there right now. It looks like we budgeted for it every year, and we, I couldn't find that we've had any unemployment expenses for years.
At least three years.
I mean, I, and I've only got three years of history in Suzanne's chart, and there's nothing, so.
Didn't we have a couple of people that tried to apply for it, though, when we had this?
Someone was scammed, they found out. Tried to apply.
Tried to, and, and did not.
Eligible.
I know, but the first few months of COVID, apparently I applied for unemployment.
Did you get it?
I saw somebody did. A lot of that going around. The only other thing I had is the town budget in total is in good shape. I mean, we're basically right where we should be. So my intent with that, Don, and for the Board of Selectmen, was I would send you a copy of it, is here's the things that caught our eye, you know, we go through it, and again, Corey and Steve have gone through it. They'll only come in, they may have some to add, they may have different ones. And really, we're just trying to make sure someone's watching these things, that they don't get overlooked until we get to a point where suddenly somebody's, like last year, we had a couple of them negative, and we were at least some last-minute scrambling to cover them. So I'm trying to prevent that from happening again as well.
So I would still send that to us, so we all got a copy, okay, we can respond. So there's a document back and forth.
Makes sense to me.
You may find the cemetery commission being a slight bit behind again this year, but we do have the new price for next year. We're mowing all the cemeteries. Right now, we have a bid for fifteen thousand and two, no bids. Nobody wants to do it.
It's so hard.
They said they can't trim everything and mow, and this guy just does it. So he submitted a bid for fifteen thousand, and he's the only one that submitted a bid.
Is that expensive?
Pardon?
Is that like fifteen, fifteen thousand or fifteen hundred?
Fifteen thousand for the year.
For all of our graveyards, yeah?
For all five cemeteries.
Yeah. Wow, okay.
That's the risk of damaging.
Your other choice.
Yeah.
And so far, it has never been taken up that they would do it. Now, if you get a new highway superintendent, possibly.
It's another plus root of the, even if it's a. Even if it's a seasonal employment, I mean, if you, if you brought somebody, if, if, if there was not enough workers to do that, if they were an employee, and that was their job from growing, growing time, but maybe it could be incorporated into.
Yeah, for Mother's Day, you, you're saying for Mother's Day to like about mid-October, right, so.
He does a spring cleanup in April. He gets it ready for Memorial Day in May. June, July, August, depending on the weather, because of the dry, he doesn't get out there, okay?
No, of course, of course.
September, he starts his fall cleanup. And those are all.
Is he just one guy?
Just one.
Works hard, obviously, when he's doing it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let y'all in a little secret. It costs me to do winter cleanup on about point-five acres, six hundred bucks. He's saying fifteen grand? Jesus, man, that, that just seems like a lot, though.
To do five cemeteries?
He's weed whacking around all of the.
He, he weed whacks every, every.
Stone.
Headstone.
All right, all right.
And he moves them down. Getting our house done, I mean, we do it ourselves, but when we used to get it done, when I was down in Houston, it was like twenty-five hundred bucks a, a season to get it done, I mean, for the, for the fall cleanup.
Yeah, you're probably right. No, you're, you're right.
The fall cleanup in April is usually two thousand. The one in September is usually another two thousand something, for those.
Yeah.
Do you feel, Lucy, you feel like that's a good price then, or like it should be more, I mean, not, it could be more.
None of the other people that we contacted would even give us an estimate, because they said, we can't do things like that. We don't have the time to, to go around all the headstones.
Yeah, and, and our cemeteries are not uniform. You know, a lot of cemeteries in Worcester, it's all one way and.
Yeah, no, we have historical gravesites. Yeah, we have historical gravesites, for God's sake, so you know, knowing that from putting out the flags, so, damn, all right.
All right, let's move along. So the next thing we have on, or had on our agenda is the budget communication to the various departments. I just passed you out a piece of paper as an example of what it would look like, because I didn't save it. I printed it, and then I just closed it, and it didn't, didn't save, so and I just created it quick this afternoon to have an example to give. And so really, this, I use the Board of Selectmen, it just kind of shows you what we're recommending be sent out this year. Aaron, just for your information, basically what's gone out in the past has just been the one year, the, the current year.
I have last years for the Board of.
So you, that's what you've been doing, so you know how it works. We really think that the various departments would benefit by the three-year history.
Oh, excellent.
Suzanne and Corey met last week. They're supposed to meet again, I think, this week, now that the November numbers are out. And what really we see is, is I had drafted a letter, Don, I sent it to you, I, I don't know if I, I think I might have sent it to, to you also, Aaron and Lucy, I, I don't remember. But I sent it out anyway, I believe, a month or so ago, kind of, this is the, the letter that's up here. I'll send it to you all again.
I remember that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and really, there's a couple of things that have to happen. I'm assuming Maribel will actually, I think she sent it out last year for you guys. She'll have to take this for each department. We'll put it in a format that she can print it and copy and paste, or whatever she wants to do. I mean, again, I'm not sure quite how that, how she would want to do that, but we will talk to her, Corey will talk to her, and try to get it in the easiest format we can. It'll look just like what I just passed each one of you. It'll show the three years. It'll show the, and I think we'll take the word budget adjusted out. That was the language that Suzanne started using because of things that would happen after the start of the year, where the budget would get adjusted. But, but it's, it makes me say, well, why was it adjusted? That's the first thing I think of. So we'll just call it the 2024 budget, I think, is what we'll call it, instead of, just so we don't get confused, anybody.
Yeah.
It'll show the actual, and then it'll show the twenty-five requested amount by category, and I know last year, I think I recall, when Maribel sent it out, you could return it electronically. So we definitely want to do that again. We'd rather see it all be electronic, but you know, some of them were on paper last year. There's a couple of things. Don, you and I had some communication back a number of weeks ago about the capital piece of this. You had provided a form last year that went out, and you told me what it was. I don't think I saved that email. So we've got to track that down and attach that to the right.
Maribel has.
Maribel has, okay. I went looking for it, and I said, okay, I know you sent me an email, you said, here's what we used last year. I could not find it, so. And the only open thing is, and it's in yellow, you can see up there is, you know, the date you guys are going to have, Maribel told people she wants it back by. I don't know what that is. I think last year we used January thirtieth, for some reason, or very close to that, right around there.
Yeah, just, we only have so many boards that meet once a month, so if it's January thirtieth, that gives basically maybe December meeting, depending on when this gets out, and then the January meeting.
We're hoping, I mean, I'm hoping Corey can get it ready to go out, because he's, he's really doing it. Suzanne's been teaching him how to do it. I know they've met. He said it looks like something he should be able to do. His challenge is time, you know, Pine Acres being very time-demanding for him. And I'll, I'll check with him the next day or two to see where he's at, because we did get the data here a few days ago. So the only question really is, are you guys, is the Board of Selectmen good with this going down this road? This is what we would like to recommend, and make sure you guys are okay.
Okay.
Steve, did you have any comments on that, or?
No, I'm all good.
Okay, and again, I'll email this to you, so you guys don't have to worry.
And what's the definition of capital? What, what dollar amount? Is there a formal?
There is not. The reason I say that is it's been debated a few different times, and I've never heard the Board of Selectmen say when they want to, and, and again, if you, Suzanne had some very strong ideas last year. She's an accountant, that's my trade. She has very strong ideas when stuff should be capital and when it shouldn't. And there were some of the things that she recommended should be capital that were not classified as capital last year. I didn't think of that, Aaron, so I haven't pulled up the, she had a definition that she used last year, and said, this, this was how we should decide. But the Board of Selectmen last year elected to say, we're going to make the decision based on the submission of the project. So you guys were making that decision individually. You know, is it, is it maintenance, is it upkeep, is it replacement of existing, or is it truly capital here? And, you know, we could, certainly, there could be a benefit by creating some language around when you have to apply to capital and what's required for it, but up until last year, in the prior what, three, four meetings I was on with Paul as the chairman, I was not aware of anyone ever actually submitting a capital request, except for Tim. Tim did his own, and submitted it, but no other department submitted a capital request. It was more of an informal request to start, and then it turned into a capital project if necessary. So I do think there's some benefit in moving towards a more structured capital planning process. But like the budget, you know, we, we could get to zero-based budgeting and a lot of other different ways of putting the budget together. But the town has a tradition of how it's been done for many, many years. It was so many volunteers. You know, you've got to be careful of the workload you try to put on people when they say, okay, I'm, I'm here to do the, you know, parks and rec stuff. I'm not here to spend hours doing the budget, you know, I, I don't have time for this. So we just got to be cognizant of those issues, I think.
Did I say your department? Would it be okay to say department slash board slash committee?
It would be okay. What, what I'm going to do with this again, Aaron, is I sent it before, looking for comments, I'm going to send it out to the three of you again, and say, this, this letter comes from you. It's not coming from the Finance Committee. This is recommended language I drafted, and Steve has looked at it. We're just saying, this is what we think you should use. If you want to put some slightly different in there, the whole intent is just to say, to me, that the intent is, look at your three-year history. You know, if you haven't been spending anywhere near your three-year history, maybe you don't need to budget two thousand dollars when you only spend five hundred a year. Or if you're almost spending it all every year, well, maybe you do, but if you spent it one year, the other two years you spent, now, again, they know what, why something happened. But put a little more thought into it, instead of just saying, I'm taking this year and adding eight percent to it.
Right, and that's my, and I agree with that, right, so, and if we could put that money
I just, I know you said.
A rainy day fund, right, a rainy day fund or something? Because God forbid if we go over it, because we keep doing level-set budgeting, it just gets out of control. We need to budget for what we're actually using. Right, I mean, you agree, right, Alan?
I agree with that totally, Steve, but it just is. I agree with that totally, Steve, but it just is. I also recognize it's hard to do that in a town where so many departments of total volunteers. I mean, I was at the Board of Selectmen meeting, the last one, I think it was the last one, when Parks and Rec group was really discussing what responsibilities they could take on. And could they, and if they did take them on, they wanted five thousand dollars additional in their budget. And they wanted to debate if they were willing to take that responsibility on to take care of the common, well, the banstand area and some of that. Because they're all volunteers and they only have so much time to do stuff. And again, you start putting administrative burden on them. And and while they may be enthusiastic about doing all they can to help the parks and rec activities in town, they may not want to sign up for administrative duties. So I think there has to be a balance by the Board of Selectmen and by the Finance Committee in putting those charges upon individuals that maybe discourage them from what they're doing. I mean, just again, it's just a balancing act, I think. But you keep nudging them in the direction where you want it to go. And hopefully, within a few years, we'll have a budget that's all online and streamlined and, you know, it's 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 just simpler.
I mean, with the sharepoint, we should be able to be online for the next year.
That's all I had on that. Any other comments, guys? I mean, are we good with that going out and get, Aaron, feel free to.
I mean, I I've heard it. I've heard you talk about, um, you know, the budget and then what they actually spend and then what gets turned back. Is there a benefit to put um, the difference, um, the budgeted amount? If they were so far off to see that, you know, for three years they were so far off or just the actual kind of.
We've actually done that when we look at it.
Yeah.
Um, this will sound very simplistic, but I was trying to make it fit on the page.
Yep.
I think we actually have the those columns in the in Suzanne's spreadsheet. You can look at it different ways.
Yeah.
But um, I wasn't sure. I I can send you or we can send you the full file. If there's other things you wanted to include again, we're we're trying to put this in a format where the Board of Select is sending it out.
Yeah.
So you guys should be comfortable with everything that's there. I like, I actually have, I use the the section I that shows the comparison.
Yeah, yeah.
But I just didn't, I tried to say, okay, keep it as simple as we can.
And if we're gonna be um, the liaison with the different departments, even if we had the the budgeted um, and the actual, then we could share that with the department and say, even if all they got was this. When you you've assigned, we've assigned each of us to work with um, various committees and boards and departments.
Who did I get?
You got the finance committee.
Uh, school committee.
See what happens when you're not there.
One of the tools that goes along with that, though, is if you look at our bylaws, every department is supposed to submit an inventory and in that inventory, it's supposed to say how old the equipment is, the condition of the equipment and what the forecast of life is. And that's a good tool, not only for, oh, actually for the finance committee and and for the Board of Selectmen. Because it helps you prioritize where the needs are for capital expenses.
Yeah.
You know, instead of, you know, just getting hit with it, you know, oh, our our server just went down. I'm gonna need a, you know, an eight thousand dollar server. Or the boiler just died, you know, now we we need to have four sections put in the boiler. I mean, instead of trying to put fires out, you get a another tool that kind of gives you a a map on on where your needs are gonna be and how you can prioritize. Because you really don't have all that much money to prioritize by timing through the school budget.
Do you know when that was last done, Paul? Do you know when that was last done?
I just thought it's in the bylaw.
I think it's done annually and I never, I never really see it happen.
I pointed that out a couple of meetings ago that that was a bylaw.
I think the only one that's actually done it at the fire department.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's probably been years since we actually done.
Every year.
Really?
What do you have? What do you have? What do you have? And how many returned them?
Yeah. I mean, honestly, the the Board of Health had nothing until COVID, so.
Yeah.
Um, but now there's some.
Right, but highway, police, fire.
Yeah.
I mean, those those are the big three.
Yeah.
Um, library.
Library probably would be your first big one.
And the other thing, it's it's kind of why it's just for insurance purposes.
Right.
Yeah. No, I I again, I've never noticed it do it, Paul. I I you 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 have brought it up before, I know.
Well, and. And when I was at the um, uh, the event yesterday, where I parked was in the cemetery of all old highway um, pieces of equipment, like I wonder what we're doing with all that? Like, has that been officially written off? Is that off our books? There's like old um, street sweepers.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, I know, I I've seen.
This is the first time I'd seen any of that stuff.
It's probably all just quietly gone away.
Yeah, it's a cemetery of.
Old things.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, but um, let's let's move on if we could, um, try to stick to the agenda as much as we can. The only other thing we had, actually, we've got our minutes to approve with, that's just Steve and I. Are the uh, special town meeting articles? Um, I would appreciate it if we could maybe just take a little time. Dawn, I don't know if maybe you want to actually lead the discussion on these going through on. I've got copies of these.
Oh, thank you.
I printed multiple.
Okay, I came early so I could print.
And I've got it on my screen, which is all I ever read normally, so. Yeah, just. So for the first one, um, I mean, I wrote that one, so I know what it is, but uh, maybe if you just want to walk through them.
Yeah.
There's nothing really jumped out at me. Steve, have you looked at all of these?
I have, and nothing really jumped out at me.
Article one is to transfer six thousand from pre-crash cash cash to the assessors stabilization account, which we should have been doing every year anyway.
Right, and that's that's every every three years they have to do the cyclical reevaluation and it's.
So we have been funding that?
Well, well, the three years ago, it was funded in one lump sum, which was just under nineteen thousand.
Yeah.
And we know it's coming, so.
So why not plan?
This is actually something Paul had been doing and it kind of fell by the wayside a couple of years ago with one of the meetings that got got left off. And it's just much easier when planning your budget and your finances and everything to say, okay, every year we know we're gonna incur six or seven thousand dollars for this item, even though we only pay it every three years. So it's just sort of an accrual for that and then it'll get paid out once every three years.
Article two is from the assessors, excuse me, from the uh, Parks and Rec. Five thousand dollars to maintain Wright Field and Common.
Well, I did have a question on that.
Something they just threw out to us. We don't.
Yeah, who pays for it now?
Nobody.
Where does the money? I mean, is anyone paying for anything there now? There's just new money.
There's no.
So it's new money. It's new. It's a new expense. Right now, it's just gets done by whoever does it. I mean, I know, Paul, you mowed a little place up the road from us. It's the triangle. Um, so it's getting done that way by volunteers.
Or it's just been deferred.
The highway will cut the grass.
Okay.
When they're doing the grass over here.
I.
But they don't do any maintenance.
And no improvements.
No improvements.
The only question I had, Dawn, was, is there someone's budget that should be reduced for five thousand dollars? So really, no, in this case. It's not like they're taking it over for somebody else that was being budgeted. Okay.
And they're not even sure if five thousand is an accurate number.
Because they don't know what the.
Because it's got to be like that, so. I mean, that's a flexible.
Okay, again, I just, I I.
My question, so my quick question is, yeah, so my quick question, like, nobody's painting lines at the field, right? Putting the bags down, making sure like the fence isn't like rusted where somebody gets tetanus.
Nope.
I mean, that's, to me.
I mean, yeah, that shed, you know, the 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 window or whatever.
Yeah, the Boy Scout shed, right, yeah.
Well, no, the one down on Wright Field, the door, the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Windows wide open.
Place where they sold food or something, wasn't it? Yeah.
Uh, to me, I think that needs to be given money to. It needs to have, you know.
The swings that's probably haven't been touched.
It's unbelievable. I mean, like, what, like, the benches, I mean, we we don't even have benches over there, right? So it's just sitting on the grass.
There are, okay.
Two benches.
Well, yeah, for the the players, but anyway, but my thing is, is, yeah, I I think it's, you see kids there all the time and little league teams.
Yeah. So so a couple of questions I think that we ought to talk about, maybe not tonight, but we ought to think about for the future is you're giving five thousand dollars to very enthusiastic, responsible people that have never had to do this before. Someone needs to guide them through what they have to do. Like, if they want to do something, there's some things they have to take out to bid. They can't just decide to, we're gonna have Cousin Joe come and rebuild the building. So I I think there needs to be some mentoring, this lot of bulk. Uh, this is a brand new, because I was at the Board of Selectmen's meeting here a couple of weeks ago when all this came up and I was, that's one of the things I thought was, okay, these people really are enthusiastic with what they're doing. However, there's some behind the scenes stuff that they probably don't know much about. So they're gonna need some help. Um, you know, mentoring, coaching, however you all think of it.
Do we own the field?
Yes, it's according to the um, what's the land, deed, registry deeds, it's owned by the town of Kim.
So is that a Parks and Rec thing?
It's been a nobody thing. It's been a.
Well, it's kind of near somebody.
It was the Board of Selectmen oversaw it. Board of Selectmen um, decided that they could put the reading things, but.
Well, for the library you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So that field needs to be taken care of. It's it's something that our youth use and I want to keep seeing used. Um, and I I'll go to bat for it, you know, a hundred to one.
Parks and Rec got some picnic tables. First time there'd been picnic tables. I, well, maybe there were some old ones that.
I mean, even the, I mean, the the swings and stuff are they even up the code? I don't know. Again, should we be investing in the youth of our community? I agree that we should be. Again, I'll just keep it short is, yeah, this isn't one-time thing, but we need to make a recurring revenue spot for this, correct?
Yeah, no, this will be, this will be in the budget going forward, I would think.
Right.
At this point, I mean, that's how I was envisioning it. It's just that, yeah, my my concern was not so much, it's five thousand dollars. I think it's money well spent from, again, this is my perspective. The Finance Committee hasn't taken a stance on it, but it's my perspective. It's money well spent. However, someone has to manage how it gets spent because you've got people just don't normally do that. So it's uh, something to think about.
I think we talked about helping them through this process.
Yeah.
Empowering them, but they're not, I said, you're not gonna be left alone.
Yeah, that's the key. Don't just throw them out there and say, good luck. Thanks for doing with that, guys. See you later.
That won't work.
Okay, okay. I think we're good with that one.
Next one came from the assessors, uh, sixteen hundred eleven dollars fifty-two cents from the Treasurers of Employment Account. The assessors wages, that's the.
Yep, no, I I this one I was at your meeting, so I'm familiar with it. Steve, you recall this one also? It's where people that uh, they 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 were not paid for vacation pay holidays that they were entitled to take.
Yes, yes, yes.
Board of Selectmen's, so I, again, I think it's, it's you're correcting an error that was made, that's all.
Yeah.
So I didn't, I didn't see any problem with it.
Well, the error was there.
Obviously, the board is gonna have to talk to about why it wasn't paid, but and obviously have points to make to that. Yeah, I heard it, yeah.
That's why you say, why you didn't put in for it, so.
Okay.
Make up for that.
Well, I I I mean, that's cool. I mean, if you need something from us, you know what I'm saying? Like, just let us know and, you know, we'll, we can take it up, but I'm down. All right, Article four.
Four is twenty eight hundred from free cash to purchase two baseball benches over there at the.
Oh, okay. Yeah, let's do that.
That's the request.
Right, it could come from.
I'm suggesting we take that out of ARPA.
I think it'd be nice to show ARPA is being used for all of the community.
Yeah.
Correct.
And the children.
Mm hmm.
So to do that, you have the article go out and then at the meeting you would say you're gonna fund it on ARPA or would you just eliminate it?
I'd just need to renumber these things.
Okay. So it just goes away?
Yeah.
So does Article four stay then or no?
No.
Okay.
Not as, not as this.
None of this is going to the council. We got.
Right, no, I know that. This is kind of for early look.
Yeah.
Per- per- preliminary or whatever you say, perim.
Uh, five, Article five was to appropriate the free cash two thousand dollars to pay for the engineering costs replacing the arch at the cemetery. Now, the last Selectmen's meeting, they said they had enough to cover it in their budget.
They think they have enough.
This came in before they said.
Right, right.
So we can leave it on, we can take it off.
I would ask them, if they say they've got it covered, I would take it off. I mean, why put the town folks through debating it if it's gonna be covered out of the budget?
The only, yeah, the only thing I would be worried about now is if they come into additional expenses in the cemeteries between now and then, they've already spent their fifteen hundred.
Right.
I mean, if we don't use the two, it goes back to free cash.
I again, I'm just saying, I I I wouldn't think it's one that we have an issue with. I certainly don't, Steve. I don't see this a problem. I'm just trying to figure out how the best way for me to handle this.
Yeah, that's my thing is.
I don't have a problem with.
I think that people might have a problem with the twenty thousand, but that's not, um, that's not the issue here.
It's not the issue.
It's a two, it's a two thousand, correct?
Yes.
All right, so, I mean, dude, we want that arc to be there.
That you put in the name of the cemetery?
Yeah, I left it blank because I forgot which one.
I was just gonna ask you which one it is, can I?
The Green Hollow Cemetery.
Okay. All right, next.
It's Croft, Croft. Is that Crawford Room?
Hmm.
Crawford Room?
It's Crawford Room.
Number six I added was to establish revolving fund for the police pistol permits. Now, when I was here, we had that. And I don't know where it went, but it was on the list. Because the person that actually handled the licensing was paid for out of that, out of the township.
Yeah, well, that makes sense.
So that's what it was set up to do. Excuse me, that's, I don't know how it disappeared off uh, off that chart.
So did they go into just general funds or did we just never receive it? The twenty-five percent?
We receive it.
Just in the general funds, okay.
Hey, Don, isn't, this could go up, though, right? Because now the pistol permitting, right, your firearms, like, is, this is for firearms licenses, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
We lost you.
Nope, he's gone.
It all makes sense to me. I mean, I.
But I didn't think, I thought new newer revolving accounts could all even down in an annual.
I'm saying, we must have accepted this a long time ago. It was in the bylaws at the list.
Okay, and so it's in the um.
It just doesn't appear.
It just wasn't being managed properly. You say the twenty-five percent went into the general fund. Everyone, someone at some point took it.
Should have been going into this right along like it used to do.
So wouldn't that be in the revenue? With your revolving account in the system somewhere?
It should, yeah.
I'm sorry, I I got dropped.
It disappeared.
The new.
Go back.
All right, sorry about that. Um, somebody was trying to call me. So, um, the pistol permits, right, now they're going to a smaller amount per year. So it's not like a seven-year license, right? It's five years. Is this gonna go up?
No, it's a hundred bucks. Uh, twenty-five comes to the town, seventy-five goes to the state.
Yeah, but I'm saying to pay the person to do that. No.
Steve, you you missed what I said. We had this before. When I was here, when Dave Galena was here, we had this. We we adopted this. We had a separate. But with the new software coming in, I don't think that was transferred.
Didn't get transferred.
So it's a possibility.
Oh, okay, all right, understood. I'm I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Did we really even need to establish it then if it was already established?
That's what I'm getting at.
Establish your business.
Council, whether we're gonna do this again because.
Yeah, it sounds to me like if it was in place and someone inadvertently started putting it all on the general fund, you should have the authority to make the change back the way it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
As long as the accounts were approved at some point in the past.
We can find some history of that revolving account.
Who approves at the state level? Who approves the revolving accounts? Is anybody?
I don't know. You know, Paul, I don't.
D L S.
Get the question. So who approves the revolving accounts at the state level? Is someone responsible for monitoring those or is it?
No, we're responsible for monitoring.
I mean, lines is is set up by regulation and the Attorney Dental's office checks, checks the town meeting.
Checks, checks the town meeting.
The attorney general should already have that then. If we had it a long time ago, it should still be on their list that we have.
Well, the attorney general has a bylaws because they have to approve them. Attorney general does not approve when the town adopts a state law.
Okay.
So like a revolving account wouldn't be reflected in their records?
No. So you can track this out.
That's why the.
It's in the annual reports. Just have to go back through.
It should get one of those reports and if it's there, I think you've got documentation that it's an existing approval. It just needs to be, it needs to be corrected. So that it doesn't become an article, it just becomes a.
There's a correction, uh, the accounting correction.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, I've got no issue there.
Uh, this is a.
You're moving eighteen fifty from the treasurer's unemployment to cover your part-time wage account?
Oh yeah, so uh, this was um. Uh, we had put in to fund five hours a week. Um, we hired this individual for five hours a week. Um, but what was put to the town meeting actually didn't increase it to five hours a week.
Left at three.
It was up to like two and a half. So we're looking to fully find it at the five hours. Which is an eighteen fifty difference.
So I just, this caught my eye just as a curiosity, why from the unemployment account versus from free cash or something like that? I mean, just because there's so much money sitting there. But I, again, I know it's the twenty thousand we haven't touched and we don't touch it every year. I just wondered if there was a. A direct connection or just sort of you said, hey, that's a better use of those ones?
Yep.
Better use of the funds.
Okay.
And now that person resigned, so we might be a while before we fill it.
Article eight is to, from the town clerk. For a free cash sum of six thousand dollars, they had three thousand to wages and three thousand into expenses for the. Additional elections coming up.
I had a conversation with Chris on this, Don, but I'm not sure it was the same one. When she was here for the board of selectmen's meeting a week or two back. And before the meeting started, she asked me about the finance committee funding this, funding something involving the. Um, election expenses out of our reserve fund. Do you know if that's the same topic or is there a second item out there?
She put an article in because we were having a special town meeting.
Okay.
So I think it's the same.
Okay, I, I, I kind of assumed it was, but I just wanted to make sure there wasn't something else hanging out there that we were still gonna be talking about.
And sure to make sure the deadline.
Okay, okay. Makes sense.
But I guess we're gonna have another special election to fill Durant's spot.
Yep.
Yeah, they will.
Yeah, we'll have.
Yeah, a primary there and then an election there. So that's two more.
Unfunded.
Unfunded, of course.
The police details also come under that same budget, uh, when, because they have a, have a detail officer in offer reelection?
Yeah, we, that's last year or the year before, we raised it because they changed the law. The amount of money in her budget.
I just wonder if she included that in what she figures for expenses.
Yeah, probably because she talked about it.
Yeah.
So.
Do we have to have a detail officer?
Yes.
I think they said you do.
That's expensive.
Yep, that's new.
That's new.
Okay.
Past year.
Yeah. We all went, oh.
I mean, it just, it was a little awkward to have him just stand in here.
But you know, with all the toy on in the world.
That's it.
It may not be appropriate for town, like, okay, there's a lot of places where it is.
Sure.
You know, so it's probably easier to say everyone does.
They have to be on site, not even to respond.
On site.
On site.
Interesting.
City Worcester, every polling place has a.
So I wonder if they don't have more than one.
Protect those things.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Article nine, we already discussed, seventy-three forty-two for the library.
Yep.
Article ten was, now this is Fred's number sixty-two forty-nine.
Same number he gave to me, so I'm not disputing it.
And he had that whole explanation.
Yeah, and again, I, I do know that we left some things out on, 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 some, somehow they, I'm not sure if we did or you did, but one of us did.
We did.
You did, okay, I know, I, I know it fell off the, fell out. And we didn't put it back in.
Originally, we were eliminating the.
Admin.
Admin. The last minute.
Remember Brad?
Put it back in. But we were taking his money and putting it into the part-time account. But we left the money in the admin account and never.
Without putting it back.
Putting it back in here.
Okay.
That's where he's shot. So if you take that and the nine thousand reimbursement from the state, he's, he's, he's good.
Good.
Just, just a point about Durant. That won't affect us. He's not our representative. He's Spencer. Spencer Luster.
Right.
We've got.
Right, he is, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You tell one I'm on call? Alright, that was the PD. Article eleven.
It's just paying a past due bill on. Finance committee had no issue with it. I mean, I'm just like, I understand that.
And the reason for that past due, did Nervil tell you?
No, but I, I know it's.
They were billing us.
Out of their schedule, right, out of the script schedule.
So they were billing us April to April. We told them to get us on to June to July, uh, July to June. Those four months in between the billing. So that's where that came from, but they never billed us.
Uh, okay.
So then they said, oh, we didn't build you last year for this. We have to tell them we're not a corporation, they can just write a check.
Right.
So you're gonna wait for it.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, when I read it, I said, okay, this, this, this stuff happens, I'm not gonna worry about it.
It's not extra, it's, we use it.
Can I ask you a unrelated question, but similar? Um, I noticed our um outlook in like the office stuff goes through May. So how do we fund June before the end of the fiscal year? Can you do a, a one month?
Wait, the board of selectmen will have the authority to transfer funds from one to another.
Cover that. Couldn't do July through.
Yeah, you should try to correct it if there's a way, but if not, that just becomes a.
But there is money in that account.
Yep.
Um, okay.
Article twelve is a. Right, this one is a hundred and two dollars and ten cents to balance this ambulance stabilization account. If you remember at the town meeting, we specifically worked.
Oh, I do, I would, I would bet, yeah, I, 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 I was just curious on this one, so.
It was the amount or whatever's left in the account. Somehow. An extra hundred and two dollars was taken out of it. It shouldn't have been. We just gotta put it back to balance it. It'll be fine. The uh, other thing here is Article thirteen is ten thousand to highway department to, uh, that's free cash. To uh operate the snow and contracted services. We had that as a special article last year.
You did, I checked.
Ten thousand.
Yep.
And uh Laurie put a, uh, not Laurie, the other one, Aaron.
Aaron.
Created a line item. We didn't know she created a line item. So that money would have been in. And we all missed it. So there's a zero amount in that line item right now.
Yeah.
So it's just putting the money that should have been there in there.
No, I, I, I went back and I saw we did do it as a special article. I said, well, it was. Understood it would be in the budget going forward and it just got forgotten. Cause I saw it was zero also and I said, well, okay. We just, no one did it. So again, I had no, I had no problem with it. I mean, I, again, I, I, I understood it.
Article fourteen is uh. From the council on aging asking to increase the cap from five thousand to ten thousand because of additional programming. That they're doing.
You guys voted to approve that at your last meeting, didn't you? I mean. I don't, I don't know enough about it to have an issue one way or the other. I don't know, Lucy, if you had any comments?
I don't agree. With the article.
Okay, why?
I don't see that they charge fees. For most of their programs. Why would they need ten thousand dollars if they're not even charging fees for their programs? Most of their programs are free.
Yeah, as I said, I don't know enough about the council on aging's finances.
Actually, besides thousand, it's even more than what I had suggested. I had suggested three. I thought that was a good start for them and then it went up to five, which was fine.
You sure what they have now?
Yeah, it wasn't here yet. I thought it was.
Uh, I think it was like twenty-nine hundred or something like that.
If they actually do have the fees or they've done any fundraising which they're not allowed to do. That money does not go into revolving account. It can't be used as a savings account.
When they run an activity, who decides if they're allowed to do it or not? I, I, I don't know, I'm just curious.
They do their own activities. They're after themselves.
But if they, if it's for fee and they collect money on it, does that require board of selectmen approval or anything?
No, it doesn't. That, that's up, that's up to the board.
So they did a bingo night.
Give me an example. Say they wanna do a bus trip to Pennsylvania, okay? And they're gonna do it here. And they invite some of the other area council of agents to, you know, to take part in it, okay? They very well could exceed the five thousand dollar amount.
Collect the money to then pay the bus company.
Okay.
Just like with the cleanup.
I'm just saying, they took a trip to Pennsylvania with buses and in hotel rooms and stuff like that. I mean, you very well could exceed the five thousand dollars. What they're asking you is, is not to spend any more money. They just wanna increase.
I, I have no problem with it, but I know Lucy, when we brought up the car, you mentioned that was the one you wanted to talk about and that you had some concerns.
And, and only because I've had experience in the past. We always had a revolving account until nineteen ninety-five when D O R came in. Said I wanna see all your revolving accounts and guess who got eliminated? Council on Aging. Cause we're not supposed to be saving.
Right.
And, and we were trying to save, we had the approval of the board of selectmen. They were giving us money every year. For a vehicle for the council on aging.
So you were saving that account for the.
We were saving that. It was a savings account. They took it.
Yeah.
And I don't know what happened to the seven thousand. I'm hoping it went back to the town.
Treasure, yeah.
But we were never told. We were just told that we were.
So I have one, I have one quick question with that. So you're stating that. You have the ability to spend ten thousand. That's not to say you're gonna spend ten thousand, so we need to keep that money free. Is that correct?
I'm not sure I faulted what you're saying, Steve.
So you have five thousand, so right now they're at five thousand as a, as a cap, right?
That they can hold in their piggy bank.
You're.
From fees, for fees.
Okay, and we're gonna say, let's increase it to ten. That's not to say that they're gonna spend ten, but we're earmarking that for ten, correct?
That, that they can, they can save up to ten thousand. So that if, if they collected eight thousand dollars for some trip, they could then pay that eight thousand out, otherwise.
Okay, that.
Yeah, it does.
Thing is that if they have a special event. And they're saving up money for them special event because they know how much it's gonna cost them. That's when you use revolving accounts. You put it in there, but that must be spent out, not saved.
Right.
So like every month you see that growing, growing.
Let's go back to my example of, only because my mother used to love bingo. Those can get really big. You know, you could, you could make hundreds of dollars a week running a bingo night for the senior centers.
Senior center wouldn't do that. Friends of seniors would.
But it's an example.
Lucy, let's say if they wanted to, they could. They, 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 they could elect to run a, an event. And if they accumulated a few hundred dollars a week doing it. Because they wanted to take Paul's trip to Pennsylvania and fund it out of that. I, again, I could see where they could get over five thousand dollars. I mean, I.
Yeah, same, okay.
If they get money from somewhere, what does it hurt going over five thousand dollars? That's what I don't understand.
Well, number one, it hurts the town. That goes into the.
Goes into the general fund?
It goes in the general fund.
So my next question is, I know you two voted to take this to an article at the board of selectmen's meeting. So you've already approved it.
Yeah, to let the.
So that's really what you decided.
And I will tell you that.
So I don't think you can change it.
I had a conversation to say, this is not a savings account. This is a, you're using.
Oh, I saw the change in the wording. I noticed that, don't worry.
Okay. I mean, I had a private conversation.
That wasn't the original wording of this.
So this is not, let's, let's.
And it was the original wording that I did not write.
So my question is, is what is it? Do they, what is, do they have a savings account? Yes or no?
They have two thousand dollars in this revolving account.
Oh, okay, so.
And they are looking to increase the Zumba fees slightly. Um, there's some of the programs, they, they feel like they have to increase the fee.
So if they make close to ten grand, right, and it becomes July or June or whatever. They just lose it and goes back to the general fund?
If it's over ten thousand, they lose it. But I think townspeople should, if they, let's say, carry nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
Yeah.
For a year and then another year, townspeople should be saying, why are we funding fifteen thousand for council on aging?
Right, I, I totally agree. Yeah, like, what, what's going on?
You bring in money and that money should be sent back out on the events that you already pre-planned.
Yep.
It shouldn't be like, well, what if we do this? Come up with an event. Say this is how much we need. Save that much money, spend that money. It moves on. It doesn't sit there.
And, and they, they, I think they requested this to be in line with all of the other revolving accounts at the select.
They were all different.
Town meeting, but the town meeting, I mean, the board of health was increased and nobody asked the board of health.
But you're earning.
We are earning a lot more than we used to.
They are not doing town business. They're doing social business.
In, in their mind, they're like, well, how come their revolving wasn't increased?
I, I can say, I don't think the finance committee has an issue with it going to ten thousand. I would say it's up to you guys. If you guys wanna fight it out, but I, I think you've put yourself in a position where the board of selectmen approved this, like, as an article.
Yeah.
So it's, it's just, we can move on. It's nothing, we're not gonna change it.
I just wanted you to know my opinion on it and I probably will not vote for it at the meeting.
Yeah.
Let's move on to fifteen. I like this one.
Only because I had to lose seven thousand.
The state did it to you.
They did it. The D O R, can you imagine?
Article fifteen is Arthur something there.
Yes, were you at that thing?
Yeah, I thought it was great. I said, I love it.
No, no, they called me Arthur.
Oh, I didn't see.
Yeah, the district attorney.
I heard that.
Okay, I didn't hear that. I, I was there when you said you wanted to introduce it, but I didn't hear him call you Arthur. That's great.
In, in light of all the things going on in the world.
It's just a good thing to do, yeah. You made all kinds of sense.
That flagpole is an American flagpole.
Yeah.
Correct.
American flag related things.
Yep, no, I, I, when you said that, I thought of all the things going on currently. And some of the things happening currently on college campuses. And something going on at Quavon or someone like that saying, well, you wanna put a special flag from another country up for me and have a celebration. I just like.
Some places are allowed to do it.
Why not?
Without the bylaw, you have to.
Yeah, you're required to.
I agree.
So I, I had no, no issues with this one.
Then I.
Me either.
So if it goes to the attorney general, she's not gonna say.
It's approved. It was approved in another town.
Another town did it.
Cause that's where it came from.
I was just afraid they would accuse us of limiting our.
I took that from another town that the attorney general said. Keep all of this, but you have to remove this. They did, she did make them take something out. Like, we can't prevent somebody from putting a flag in the ground in front of the town hall.
Okay.
That's freedom of speech.
Different.
But putting it on the flagpole, that is within our, our.
That's the flagpole. What about the highway department flagpole?
It does, does it say town?
It should say on town property somewhere.
Official.
It, it, I thought it said on town, right? It, it did say that.
Shall fly.
It says on the town flagpole.
Yep.
So that is the highway department. That, that's the highway department, that's the police department, fire department, yeah.
Cause I don't wanna see down there, but yes, they're putting up other signs.
Yeah, no, that's, I like, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Word version of this so that it is the same formatting?
If you can send that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think that'll be a unanimous.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
It's coming from me.
Uh, that's okay. The, uh, the final one sixteen is um the correction of funds. Available from treasury in the amount of four thousand nine fifty-six for emergency management grant. For emergency management grant account funded, number two, three, six, two, and basically, the way I looked at this is correct if I'm wrong, but the, the funds, we got the funds from a state grant. They were put into the wrong account, they should have gone to the emergency management fund, and they went into the general fund.
Yep.
So, again, finance committee has no problem with a correction like this.
Yep, we've got the money from the state already.
It's just sitting in the wrong bucket.
Sitting in the general fund, sort of the grant account, so we're just moving it into the grant account.
Wonderful.
And the, the final two articles here.
This one missing though. The um. The cable. To um.
To expend out of the cable.
Yeah.
That's not on here.
Yeah, but that was, I thought that was approved.
We agreed to.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's not on here.
Yeah, we have.
Did anyone write it up?
I'll write it up.
So there was eighteen thousand dollars in that cable account?
Yeah.
And we can't spend any of it unless the town approves it. Which is why we couldn't pay for any of this equipment.
Don, the other ones are up on the screen anyway.
Okay. Article seventeen is about a hundred thousand at the general stabilization from free cash. Eighteen is seventy five thousand from free cash into capital stabilization. And the crews are eleven thousand that we do, out of nineteen.
And, and just to comment, I, I, so, I think those are good decisions to make, because then you require a two-thirds vote to take that money out for any other purpose, instead of just leaving it in general funds, so. That, that gives you another layer of protection of where those funds could be spent, as far as the townsfolk's concerned, because it benefits the town folk or individuals that. It requires them, you know, two-thirds, it's just more security around it, so I'm, I'm in favor of all three of those.
Article twenty is the fifteen thousand for the financial audit for fiscal year twenty three. When we.
The same company?
Yes. But we redo the bond in a year, the buy and trade, we're gonna do three years of audits, this is year three. They already got the two, so this will be here. And with sometime within the next year, probably at the annual, we're gonna have to get the town bonded, this town is not bonded.
We can't do it sooner than that?
You have to have the audit.
We're gonna have the audit first.
Before we can do that, yeah.
Do that, that way we get a bond rating. We don't have one.
No, I know we don't.
Which is why we can only do it in one year.
I heard that.
One year bond.
Yeah, no, that, that way I understand.
This building, any repairs in this building, that has to happen.
Okay.
That's what that.
So I think from the finance committee perspective, Don, that, you know, we, again, we haven't, wait till we see, you get them formally drafted and get your language cleaned up and everything, but. Steve, I think my position is that there's nothing here that the finance committee would be opposed to at the town meeting.
No, I totally agree, um, I, I have no opposition to anything, um. You know, and I'm fully supportive of it.
Yeah, I was just glad to see you put free cash into stabilization, I just think that's.
Yep.
Again, it's, it's still can be spent, but at least it takes a two-thirds vote, instead of just the majority, so.
Right.
And looking at other towns around us, that's a healthy, we have a, a good amount in those accounts.
Oh, we're, we're very well off compared to all the towns around us, when you go out and do some of the other stuff, but.
Uh, board of selectmen, are, do we plan on having another, uh, meeting before S T M or?
Yep, next week and then the week after Christmas.
We'll have one more Tuesday at least.
Alright, cool, cuz, and so just to let you know, on a side note, I will try to, I, I will start getting that other screen up and running for the S T M, and. It's okay with you guys, I can kind of roll it out to the fire department, are we gonna use the main area in the fire department, like we usually do, okay, cool. So I will, uh, start talking to the chief and just testing it out if that's cool. You guys good with that?
Yep.
Alright.
Then that'll just all be left over at the fire department the second.
No, the, the second one, yeah, that's, wherever, it's not there right now, but I'll find it and.
It's, it's in the board of health room right now.
Wonderful, yeah, I'll get that all up and running, um, I plan on taking off from the eighteenth till the fifth, so. I hope to have it either done this weekend or the weekend I come back from P C O, so, we'll go from there.